Good afternoon and welcome to the Sheriff's Office Retirement Plan Board Meeting on Thursday, March 25th at 1:00 in the afternoon. Welcome to all members being present today, so excited about that for our Board of Trustee members. We'll begin with item 2A with the approval of today's meeting agenda. If you take a minute to review and then we'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
I will move to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 2B is approval of the February 25th meeting minutes. If you take a minute to review, then we'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3 is new business. 3A is Patrick Wing from Marquette Associates with a transition update and recommendation. Good afternoon. How are you today?
Doing well. Good afternoon, Dr. Bridget. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to meet everybody in person today. Nice to see you all again. So we have just one book today. All of the discussion materials are in this one book. We'll start out, if you can hop behind the exhibit there, or excuse me, the cover page, and hop behind the title page to page 2. Just spend a quick minute covering exactly what we're going to discuss today. So the first item on the agenda there will be largely around the transition update. You know, as you all well know, over the past few months, we've tackled implementation, transition as it relates to equity markets, fixed income, private REITs. I will have an update on the latter there shortly. So today, we'll take a look at hedge funds, and once we get through that and some recommendations, we will circle up with some other items that we talked about in the past, namely related to the alternatives. Start to talk about the alternatives in the fund. Think about things from a total portfolio perspective, namely, you know, what sort of, what are we looking for when we allocate to alternatives? What are the role we want them to play in the portfolio? What do we want them to do for the fund itself? We'll spend a quick minute talking about asset allocation tools and resources. Since we're focused at a very high level today, just want to give you a quick flavor of some of the, those tools and resources that we'll be taking a look at in the coming months to help develop that long-term roadmap from an asset allocation perspective, updating the policy statement related to asset allocation, and also ensuring some best practices. And then we'll just talk about next steps. So we've talked about them regularly in the past, but important to make sure that those steps and priorities as we see them are in line with how the board would like to proceed. So with all that said, if you can hop behind exhibit 1 to continue with our transition update, the hedge fund overview on page 4, if we could start there, please. So right now, the fund has four hedge fund investments. They are listed there in the various color columns. I'd like to spend a brief minute on two of them, namely Hatteras, which is the second one, and the last one, and we'll call it orange-ish, on all the way to the right, Morgan Stanley. So there's not a lot of information beneath those funds because they are currently being liquidated. Based on my understanding of the historical data around those funds, they initially were allocated to all the way back in the late 2000s, 2007 and '09 respectively for Morgan Stanley and Hatteras. In the early 2000s, early to mid 2010s, it appears that the board made the decision to liquidate or redeem from those funds. And again, this is based on the data that was provided to us from the previous advisor. However, there's still nominal allocations to those funds, so it's unfortunately taken many, many years for them essentially to wind down. So right now, within Hatteras, there's about $35,000 or so. We continue to submit the redemption paperwork that tender offers to get that out of the equation. And then for the Morgan Stanley fund, all the way to the right, it's about a $6,000 investment right now, so again, very, very small and material, and we're just waiting for it to wind down and return the remaining funds. So I'd like to focus, you know, predominantly on the two other funds there. Graham, you see all the way to the left in blue, and then Millennium there in yellow. So at a very high level, these are very similar type strategies. You can see we list Graham as absolute return, and then Millennium as multi-strategy, but even though there are labeling differences, they operate very similarly. So how they work is Graham and Millennium respectively allocate investor capital to various portfolio managers or traders that work on behalf of the fund. So it might be traders looking in the equity markets, in fixed income markets, commodity markets, employing some arbitrage opportunities, but the long and short of it is they are very, very similar. And I want to come back to the fees in just a second and talk a little bit more about the historical performance of those funds. So Graham's a firm that did very, very well subsequent or amid the global financial crisis in '08, '09, and 2010. And usually what we see is success usually begets more investor money, but doesn't necessarily beget more success for the fund itself. Typically, a smaller fund will be more nimble, have, operate a little bit more efficiently, and we saw that earlier on. But as the fund grows, you know, operating more nimbly and then execution can tend to suffer. And when we show the returns on the next page, that does appear to be part of the story as Graham hasn't necessarily done particularly well over the life of the investment over the past almost eight years now. Now Millennium is a different story. They operate very similarly, but Millennium is actually one of the strongest multi-strategy hedge funds out there. They historically have an exceptional track record. They are very hard to get into for investors, are very selective about the capital that they take on because of their track record, because it has been so well, and they're actually closed. They're not accepting new capital. Now, from a fee perspective, if you look in blue there below Graham where the fees are boxed up, you see a 2% management fee and a 25% incentive fee. That is fairly high for hedge funds these days. That was historically the case, but that's come down over time, particularly that 25% management, or I'm sorry, incentive fee. Essentially, what that's saying is that the manager will share in the profits along with the investor. So if the fund gains and hits a high, what's called a high watermark, or just think a high market value, then the difference between that gain and the previous high watermark is shared 25% to the manager, and then the investor keeps 75%. We've seen those fees come down at not 2 and 25, but really 1 and 1/2 and more, 15 or 20 over time. So the fact that Graham's fees have remained pretty sticky is admittedly a little surprising, just given the track record that they've had over the past couple of years, and they're certainly on the higher end from a fee perspective. Related to fees, as we've talked about previously, I spoke with Graham. Their 2% management fee, 1 and 1/2%, or 75%, of that goes directly to Graham. Half a percent goes to Morgan Stanley as things stand right now. So if you were to keep Graham, and that's not in line with my recommendation later on, and I don't want to scoop myself, but that fee wouldn't change. Instead of being 1 and 1/2 just per, to Graham, the half a percent going to Morgan Stanley right now would actually go to Graham then. So those fees are static. They're not going to change. For Millennium, it's a little bit of a different story. I confirmed that with the manager and reviewed the contract myself along with Ms. Pratt and Ms. Gates, that that is a contract directly with Millennium. So there's no third party to that contract. It's between the county, the fund, and Millennium directly. So the fees that you see there are going to Millennium and Millennium alone. That's a little, that's somewhat of an aberration to what we've seen with some of the other managers as we've discussed in the past, but it was good to see that Millennium, it's just a direct contract between the county, and there are no other parties as a part of that contract. Now, if you look on the next page, and I'll just, I'll pause after this for any questions.
Excuse me. May I ask you a question on this page?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
You talk about these fees being on the high side, and now historically they're drifting downward, but these are baked into those particular pies, are they not? I mean, you're stuck with them for the life of the investment.
Yes, you're stuck with them for the life of the investment, but these are, these are open-end funds, so, and I'm going to talk about this shortly. The board can vote to redeem from, you know, one and/or both of those managers if you choose to do that. So it's not a closed-end fund where the money's tied up for 10, 12, 15 years. So the liquidity dynamics are more favorable to the investor.
Which brings me to my second question. For the two that are liquidating and where there is small change left over, what made it impossible to completely exit the position when the trustee said, "We want out of this"?
So I'm going to have to make a supposition there since I wasn't around, but typically when you see...
I wasn't either, so you're okay on this?
When you see those dynamics, it's usually an asset liability mismatch. And, you know, by saying that, so the underlying assets of the fund themselves are less liquid than the liquidity they're promising the investors.
So they were underwater?
They weren't. They may have been. I don't know that for certain, but when you think about it, so just like, say, an open-ended real estate or the private REIT discussion that we talked about at the last month meeting, an asset liability mismatch. So the liquidity for the underlying assets doesn't line up with the liquidity or the liability that they're promising to the investors, right? So when you have a run on the fund or a large amount of redemptions, then they typically throw up these quote-unquote gates, which then limit, limits your redemption over time and extends the life of your redemption. So that would be my guess, but I honestly don't know for certain.
Well, does that mean these last two pieces, that that ratio is now in balance, or that the whole fund has come to its, the end of its life?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't follow.
Well, we've got 35-ish...
Right.
And 6-ish. So does that mean they have the liquidity asset value on the plus side now, or is the whole shebang due to mature, and that's when our money's going to come back?
So for Hatteras, the way that operates is they, unfortunately, we have to submit quarterly, they have quarterly tenders. So if you want to redeem your position, you submit a quarterly tender to them, and they prorate those redemption proceeds, and I think that's why it's, it's taken as long as it has. We submitted one last quarter, and we will essentially get a max of 15% of that remaining value. We'll submit another one this quarter to continue to have this ball rolling, but it could be still a number of, a couple of...
Just nibble away till it's zero.
Unfortunately, yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if we look on page 5 to wrap up the, excuse me, the hedge fund discussion, so quickly, you know, the, the name of the game obviously is, you know, how, how have these managers done? You know, there are obviously other considerations, and I don't, I don't want to minimize them to any degree, but I wanted to show the performance of the two funds relative to the larger hedge fund universe. So you see in blue, those are Graham returns. Green is Millennium, and gray is the benchmark. So the common time periods between the three are the fourth quarter, one-year, and three-year, and then further towards the right where you see since May 31st, 2016, that was the inception of Graham. And then all the way to the right, that was the inception of Millennium. So just to echo my comments earlier, obviously, you can see Graham in blue there certainly haven't necessarily kept pace with the peer group by any stretch of the imagination because of the challenges I talked about a little bit ago. Millennium, on the other hand, you can see their returns pretty strong over time, and again, these returns, I should have mentioned, it is footnoted, this is net of all fees, including the management fee and that incentive fee. So these are the net returns that the fund has been experiencing. So Millennium since 2013, with a 10% return, sort of equity-like returns with lower volatility, which is really the name of the game if you're going to look at the hedge fund universe. That is sort of what's been sold to investors over time, hasn't come to fruition in aggregate or for many of the funds, but as I mentioned, Millennium is a very strong fund, has been around for 30-plus years, and historically very, very hard to get into because a lot of investors like to try and allocate their funds to Millennium. So with all that said, let me pause for a quick second, I think, as I saw on the agenda. This is more of a, the transition update where the, the latter would be really around the recommendations. So let me pause for any, any questions before we move on. Yes, sir.
Down at the bottom there, on the right-hand side, what does the R indicate? Hedge Fund Relativity Index, or what's the R?
Hedge, it's just hedge fund return indices.
Return.
And then the specific one, FOF, is the Fund of Funds Composite within that index. So they have various hedge fund strategies depending on the actual funds themselves.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay. So then this would be the next item in, in the agenda. Okay. So if we look at recommendations on the next, underneath the next tab, and start on page 7, as you all well know, we have to have some considerations for what we're going to propose. So number one, the private REITs. Based on the board's rec, or excuse me, decision at the last meeting, again, working with Ms. Pratt and Ms. Gates, those redemption documents were submitted really immediately following the next meeting. However, your note there in the second sub-bullet point is funds likely to be wired back on or around 86, or April 6. So I use the word likely there for a couple reasons. Number one, we have heard back from Blackstone and Starwood that everything is in good order, and that will be moved forward. For Black Creek, we haven't received 100% confirmation yet. We provided them everything that they need. They've told me they're working internally. I spoke with them yesterday. They have every expectation, their words, that it's going to be processed along with these other ones, but we, as we sit here today, we don't know with 100% certainty. So I just want to keep that in the back of our mind when we talk about rebalancing, because a lot of the rebalancing is predicated on all this money coming back. So we'll have to maybe qualify any approval or motion from the board just in case we don't see all that money come back. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Finally, as it relates to the ETFs, as we've discussed in the past, we're looking to bring everything under the Wells Fargo umbrella. We liquidated pretty much all the ETFs previously. There are two remaining ones, so that'll be a part of the recommendation to, again, move out of that type of investment vehicle, bringing everything under Wells Fargo. The hedge funds there finally, and then investment policy. And I mentioned that, if you look on page 8, you know, we spent a lot of time talking around implementation, but we have to operate within the confines of the current investment policy statement until we can tackle that later this year. So importantly, if you look in the bottom right, all the way to the bottom right, the small table there, if you recall, the global equity target has a range of plus or minus nine percentage points. So all the way to the right of that table where you see green there, that means you're overweight in asset class, and red, underweight, but when we aggregate the US-developed, non-US and emerging market equities, we're at about 8.4% overweight. So we're within the confines of the current IPS, but we need to keep that in mind because we are largely redeeming alternatives money, right? Those private REIT money. So we have to think about how we're going to deploy that and still operate within the current confines of the investment policy statement to stay within the previously approved ranges. So with that said, if you look at page 9 and 10, we'll talk about the termination recommendations. So for the investment managers, the first two you see there are ETFs. You see Pacer Benchmark Data and Infrastructure Real Estate Sector ETF, and then Real Estate Select Sector Spyder Fund. So those are two ETFs. Again, to simplify trading rebalancing, it would be my recommendation to terminate those. And then related to my comments around the hedge funds, recommendation to terminate Graham Absolute Return Fund. To circle back to the liquidity dynamics of that fund, I've spoken with Graham. They require 30 days liquidity. Liquidity is provided quarterly. So long story short, if we get those redemption documents in before the end of May, we should expect proceeds by sometime in early July. And I have been told that they intend to fully pay out immediately, so we won't have a dynamic like Hatteras or Morgan Stanley, that portable alpha. We should expect all that money to come back in short order. But given that it won't come back until July, much like we did with private REITs last time, I said, "Let's get the redemption docs in. Let's circle back at this meeting on where the funds are going to be allocated." We should do the same thing with Graham. Since we're not going to see the money come back for three and a half months, and we have a meeting in late June, then at that time, we can circle back and say, "Hey, we expect this money in two weeks or so, so where do we want it to go?" And we'll have a better picture of how things are allocated at that point. So if the board does decide to move forward with it, we don't have to make a decision about where that money's going to go, because it won't be coming until early July. Yes, sir.
If I may. You, you used in this segment the term Wells Fargo. Are these actually with them? I thought we had moved away from Wells.
Uh, no, no, sir. Wells Fargo...
Or they had sold off their custodian business.
They had, they have entered into agreement with Principal for Principal to buy the Wells Fargo custodian business. That deal has not closed. It's my understanding that that will be folded under Principal in Q3 or Q4 this year. So later on, as we'll look at the next steps, and as we talked about before, custody evaluation once we tackle implementation, asset allocation, which, you know, in my head are, are higher priorities, then we're going to circle back to that and have that next on the list.
When would you suggest we get started on that, anticipating a closing date, as you've just indicated?
Well, it's my understanding that, that necessarily the team or the client service team that works with the county is not going to change. There may be some branding changes or some back office changes, but I would, it's my hope that there would be no interruption of, of service. So immediately after we start or get through the asset allocation investment policy, that's the next thing on the list. So hopefully July, August, we hit that on the head.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can you describe on your page 9 and 10 with your reasoning? You went over Graham Absolute Return on, on 9. Where's the, is the data attached for their poor performance in Graham?
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Bridget. So that's found on, in the previous section, I believe, on page 5. So Graham there is in blue, their net, net returns, and then the benchmark, Millennium's in green and the benchmark is in gray. So you can see fairly consistently, short-term, intermediate, longer-term, since inception, that May 31st, 2016, well south of the benchmark there. So high fees, poor performance, generally a reason to consider moving on.
And are these the same measures that you're using for, when you're using the reasons on Pacer and the Real Estate Select and the SPDR fund?
So with those two funds, Dr. Bridget, they're ETFs.
Uh-huh.
So if you recall in the past, the rebalancing trading process flows through Morgan Stanley.
Yep.
So it's going to be our recommendation, like we did with everything else, to liquidate those because they're an ETF vehicle and move into a mutual fund vehicle that's similar in spirit, but also with the private REIT money, and I'll speak to this in just a couple of minutes, to be a pretty sizable reduction in the fees based on those. So similar exposures because we have to keep them in the alternative bucket, just a different vehicle and lower cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then trading through Wells and...
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, since it would be mutual funds that would happen exclusively through Wells Fargo. So again, bringing more things under their umbrella. So on page 10 now, we talked about some of the terminations, but the money has to go somewhere, right? So as far as additions, be my recommendation to consider two new investments, both being mutual funds. The first, the Fidelity Real Estate Index Fund. So again, a lot of this money is coming out of real estate, which is an alternative. We need to keep it into a quote-unquote alternative right now. So Fidelity Real Estate Index Fund is essentially a passive mutual fund that invests in the stocks of companies that own and operate real estate assets. At the same time, I would like the board to consider the ladder manager there, Conan Steers Global Infrastructure Fund. So even though we're taking money a lot, or a lot of money out of real estate, and we know there's structural headwinds around real estate, a lot of our clients have taken a look at infrastructure. You know, it provides a similar exposures, but these are companies that own and operate infrastructure assets, so like transportation assets, like rail, toll road, utility grids, power grids, electricity grids, contracted assets like broadcast towers, satellite networks. And Conan Steers specifically was one of the first movers in sort of that real asset, real estate infrastructure space. They launched this fund particularly, they were one of the first ones to, to launch this mutual fund. They use a framework that takes into account what's going on from macroeconomic or the economy perspective, and try to marry it with a bottom fundamental, bottom fundamental analysis, meaning that they also take a deep dive into the companies that they're, that they're buying. They largely, and I provided a manager memo as a part of board docs, and it is in the back of this book, they largely have done very, very well relative to their peer group, relative to their benchmark. Our research group did a deep dive into the global listed infrastructure space less than a year ago, and Conan Steers was their top pick in that space, particularly for our clients that are reducing the real estate exposure a little bit, wants, still want sort of exposure to, say, inflation-sensitive type assets, assets that will do a little bit better if inflation picks up, where we believe infrastructure is one of them. And we have about, I would say, more than a dozen clients invested in the fund right now with an amount upwards of about 75 million.
So just break for a second. In the back of your book, there's a loosely on Conan and Steers, if you haven't seen it in the, in board docs.
And they are a managed fund, is that correct?
Yes, so that is an actively managed fund within the global listed infrastructure space. You'll notice that on the real estate side, we're proposing an index fund, but there are no passively managed listed infrastructure managers out there right now. There's a couple of ETFs that are rather expensive, but on the listed infrastructure side, really, the whole opportunity set is, is active managers.
Well, I'm kind of going the other way on this. Why would we not be more inclined to do a managed fund where they can adjust the sales as they go along, as opposed to an index fund? And there you are.
On the, on the real estate side?
Yeah.
I think what we, so a couple of things. The real estate universe is very small. It might only be 100 or so companies of eligible real estate or REIT companies to invest in. And when you think about active managers, the lower the opportunity set, the less opportunity they have to, you know, buy and sell securities that will do relatively well. If you have a bigger opportunity set, then you have more opportunities. So historically, like a small-cap value manager who can pick from 2,000 stocks tends to do quite well because of that big opportunity set. But when you have such a small one, and the relative performance of those stocks isn't all that great, it's hard for managers to outperform the benchmark net of their fees. So a lot of active managers in this space are probably charging in the neighborhood of 80, 90 basis points. So for those reasons, we generally propose a more passive approach in the REIT space.
You lobbed me a soft one. Why go there at all?
Trying to remember what I said, if, if there's a playback.
It sounds to me like those dollars would work harder for us over in the, in the Conan and Steers.
So I think that, you know, that's a, that's a terrific point. I think it's more of a matter of diversification, you know, as we'll see in just the next page. We're talking about $8 million in potential proceeds from the private REITs and the two ETFs, and the proposal's essentially... And the proposal's essentially to split that between the index and Cohen and Steers. So, it's more of a diversification standpoint. Do we want Cohen and Steers managing 7% of the fund as we stand here today? And, you know, also to your point, I'd mention that we're tackling this implementation first because of the confines of the current investment policy statement. When that changes, we're going to circle back to implementation, right? Because we'll have different confines, different objectives, different constraints. So, the managers, as they stand here today, they could look different in the next six to nine to 12 months. But we have to be cognizant under the, really, the confines and the current statement as it relates to these recommendations.
Well, if their universe on the, on the index fund, if their universe is so small, why wouldn't we go out and search for a specific, like American Tower, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing out a name there, three or four of those for the same dollars?
I would argue that our firm, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but likely, the board doesn't have the knowledge or requisite knowledge to do, you know, income statement, financial modeling, analysis on individual securities. So, I think.
You do.
No, admittedly, I do not. That's not something we do. We don't, we don't buy and sell individual securities. It's just investment manager due diligence. So, that would largely be my reasoning. It would be a fiduciary risk, I think, to hold individual securities like that.
Okay.
So, do you have a statement about the Fidelity Real Estate Index Fund?
Yes, so historically, we just provided the memos for the active manager recommendations, but I could certainly speak to it. So, that's a fund that.
That's okay. I just wondered if there was anything in writing.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Is there any, any, I'm just, didn't know if I was missing it. No? Okay.
No, we didn't, happy to provide more color if you'd like.
It's helpful to me to have more information, so I understand what their performance is and some of the reasons to make those decisions.
Well, and also, so you could see how, and I'm not slamming you folks, I think you're doing a good job, but you'd like to know what does Lipper think of them, what does Morningstar think of them, and so on.
Yes, that's helpful information, right? Especially when we're making the decisions about adding them to our portfolio, the more information for me, the better.
Understood.
Do you have a symbol for that?
It's F-S-R-N-X.
Foxtrot, Sierra, Romeo, X-ray?
There's an N before that.
Start it again.
Nick before, oh, Foxtrot, Romeo. F-S, wait, no, I'm sorry, F-S-R-N-X.
Yeah, it's on Page 11.
Is it though? Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
I've cheated.
The next page.
Yes, and then the Cohen and Steers is also on that page of C-S-U-I-X.
And are there fees associated with Chapter, with Page 10 as well?
Yes, Dr. Bridget, if we can move to Page 11, I can speak to those, basically, how this proposed rebalancing would impact the current level of the fees, if that would be okay.
Sure.
So, the rebalancing, as you can see here, and there's a lot of data on this page, because there's a lot of investments, but if you specifically focus on the alternative section, about, maybe call it two-thirds of the way down the page, first, let me speak to the actual proposal, and then I'll circle back to the fees. So, it would be a full liquidation of the Pacer Benchmark Data and Infrastructure Real Estate Sector Fund, again, that ETF, a full liquidation of the Real Estate Select Spider, excuse me, Select Sector Spider Fund. Let me circle back to the two purchases in black there. Right now, we're expecting about $6.6 million. You see that below that last $4 million. That would be the private REIT redemptions. Again, hopefully, the Black Creek money comes back. This is taking that into account. So, if we assume for a second that this can play out, the current fees for the private REITs and the ETFs in aggregate are around $140,000. As you recall, the private REIT management fees were quite, quite high for the purchases of the Fidelity Fund that has an expense ratio of just seven basis points, so 0.07%. The Cohen and Steers Fund is 94 basis points, so 0.94%. So, then, in aggregate, the fees for those two would be about $40,000, based on that $8 million aggregate allocation, which therefore would be about $100,000 less than where the money is coming from. Questions around that? I do want to make one other comment about this proposal before the board considers it.
Questions or comments thus far?
Everybody's looking.
It's getting ready.
So, quickly, I'd like the board to consider this proposal. However, it almost needs to be qualified to some degree, because we don't know for certain that the private REIT money is coming back. So, what you can see here, again, is three essentially redemptions for purchases, but then at the bottom, having some funds go into cash for upcoming capital calls and, you know, liquidity benefit payment needs. So, for consideration, if it would be appropriate, I think something along the lines of raising, say, a minimum of $950,000 that goes to cash, and then the remaining proceeds that we see come in is split evenly between those two funds, as I've outlined here. So, I'm hoping that it's $8 million split evenly, but I don't know as we sit here today. And if it doesn't end up being the case, then we can circle back on this in April. Questions around those dynamics?
So, we currently haven't received the $6.5 million yet.
No, that should be coming in really two to three business days into April.
Okay.
So, I think the, on Page 12, Pat is looking for a, for the board to approve the proposed rebalance, as outlined on Page 11, if the board's ready to do that.
Do you want a motion before discussion, or vice versa?
Oh, you can have discussion.
Okay. I'm fine with going ahead with available funding for Cohen and Steers. I would like to put off a decision on the other one until we have a little more data about what's going on, the quality of it, and all that kind of stuff that we've already talked about. So, half of, half of the position, or half of the steps, I would like to postpone. First step, I'm fine with if the, if the dollars are there, or when those dollars come in.
The only comment I would make to that, Mr. Walters, is that, you know, if we do do the $4 million purchase, then the rest of the money either has to go somewhere, or it has to sit in cash, and it can't go into equities right now, because we'll breach policy.
Can't go wrong with cash for a month or two.
Sometimes there's an opportunity cost, but no.
I'm not seeing it.
Past couple of days. But, you know, that, that's certainly a worthy consideration.
That's my two cents.
So, I think the board certainly would take a motion to accept that, if you'd like to do his motion.
I would move to accept the purchase of the Cohen and Steers, subject to available funds, and to defer a decision on the other one until we have a little more evaluation.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Did you have a no?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. And then the next is to recommend that the board vote to terminate the Graham Absolute Return Fund.
I will move to terminate said fund.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you all. So, we'll switch gears here, be hop behind Exhibit 3, based on the feedback and our discussions previously around asset allocation, namely, portfolio construction and the amount of alternatives in the fund. Thought it'd be helpful to begin this discussion more with a high-level framework, and then work our way into a little bit more granularity at the next meeting. But if you look at Page 14, what we had, or what I asked our team to do, was really go run through all the CAFERS for the Maryland County Pension Funds and pull the respective target allocations across the board here. So, you can see in that top row, we've broken things down across a number of key groupings. So, those first two rows are really traditional assets, right? Equities, fixed income, the latter three more alternatives. You see private equity credit there in the middle, hedge funds, and then real assets, with things like real estate, infrastructure, commodities, things of that nature. So, you know, I think these, these sorts of references are important. It's also important to keep in mind, they shouldn't drive the decision-making process, right? Every fund and county is unique in their goals and constraints and objectives, but it's a certainly helpful reference point. So, I'd just like to draw your attention to the bottom there, where we're showing the average, and then the county's pension fund. You can see the split between your traditionals of 53, 27, the average across the rest of the county, so about 80% in traditional, 20% in the latter three, alternatives-type bucket. Whereas, from a policy perspective, right now, the Sheriff's Fund is looking at almost a two-to-one. So, 67% to traditional, you know, predominantly in equities, as you would expect, but then 33% across the other alternatives buckets. So, right now, again, just a helpful reference tool, you know, many times, we get the question, you know, what are, what are our peers doing? What are, what are other counties in the Maryland marketplace doing? But again, shouldn't drive decisions, but a helpful reference tool as we move forward here and think about asset allocation. So, we look on Page 15, just shifting gears now, and as we begin to think about alternatives, certainly important to, to start from the top, right? Not just look at alternatives first, but what are we trying to do? How are we trying to build the portfolio, as you can see here, called portfolio construction? You know, how are we trying to build the mousetrap, if you will, to get to where we need to be? So, the key takeaway there is up in, up in black, you know, we're trying to hit that target rate of return while minimizing risk. So, you know, what's risk? We think there are two major components to it. One, volatility, certainly, to avoid the risk of having to sell something at the wrong time, particularly if you have negative cash flows, right? You can have to sell something at the wrong time, and then the value of that's permanently impaired, whatever you sold can't then recover. And related to that, tracking error, or essentially deviations from your assumed rate of return. So, to the extent that you can minimize those annual or long-term returns around, you know, your actuarial assumption, what that'll lead to is a more smoother or more stable asset base, therefore, more stable funded ratios, and then hopefully, more stability from a budgetary perspective, because things are coming in more in line with what's expected. So, if you look on Page 16, to talk, dig a little bit deeper into this asset allocation discussion, you know, when we think about using different asset classes, so anything outside of equities and fixed income, one of the things we want to think about, again, is, you know, how to build this mousetrap. But say we just have a two-asset, asset portfolio of equities and fixed income, and we want to also include XYZ, right? In a perfect world, we have a portfolio of, say, four or five asset classes, they all have high expected returns, but they don't move in lockstep with each other, right? They have low correlations. They march to the beat of their own drum, and at the end of the day, that gives you more opportunity to sell high and buy low. And at the end of the day, that's the name of the game. That's how you really accrue the benefits of diversification. So, with that said, when we think about sort of building that mousetrap, this bottom chart is really illustrating the benefits of that diversification. So, you can see up above the dotted line in the top right, it's called the efficient frontier, but the key takeaway here is that the whole, or the total portfolio, can be greater than the sum of the individual pieces. So, you see all the individual pieces there from left to right in circles, and the respective risk and return characteristics. But when you put the pieces together, if they're not moving in lockstep, if they provide diversification, give you more opportunity to sell high and buy low, then this dotted line represented of your portfolio, your return expectation, again, can be better than the sum of the individual components. So, that's the key reason why you would want to consider adding additional asset classes, say, to just a straight equity and fixed income portfolio. Now, on Page 17, the past couple of pages have been more quantitatively focused, but internally, we think about things more qualitatively as well. So, it's not just as simple as, hey, you know, outside equities and fixed income, let's, let's look at XYZ, right? You know, we think real estate's a good idea, we think infrastructure's a good idea, we really want to know, what, again, what are we trying to do here? What are we trying to accomplish? So, we see asset classes, and it's kind of falling into two main buckets here. You see the first one on the left with the green header there, the growth engine. If you have a portfolio that has an assumed rate of return of 7.25%, you're going to need a lot of growth engine-type assets, things like equities, other asset classes listed here, high yield, private equity, private credit, and a large allocation of that, because in order to hit that 7.25% return, you need asset classes that have return expectations of eight, nine, or even 10-plus percent. But at the same time, there are periods in the short term where these assets tend not to do well. So, there's some cyclicality around that, around the returns. And we believe that's largely driven by what's going on with inflation, the inflationary environment, whether we're in sort of a rising inflationary environment, or what's called a deflationary environment, when we go into economic recession, economic contraction, interest rates tend to fall. So, those are two environments where equities tend not to do well. So, if you look on the right here, we believe most investors should have quote-unquote "insurance" around those periods when equities don't do well. Inflationary and deflationary. Now, the latter, deflation, is very well-understood, you know, over the past 40, 50 years, when the economy turns down, rates tend to come down, bond prices tend to go up, cashing that insurance, use it for liquidity needs, benefit payments, or rebalance, hopefully, back into equities when they become cheap. Inflation's a little bit of a different animal, and we'll spend more time on this in just a minute here. We certainly believe it's not as well-understood. There's really no perfect solution to getting inflation protection like there is on the high-quality bond side amid an economic recession. And secondly, we haven't seen it for 40-some-odd years, right? And we'll talk more about that distinct period in the mid-'60s and '70s here, just surely. But the reason why we call it insurance is that most of these asset classes have lower expected returns than equities, right? So, we think about that as an opportunity cost, right? If you're going to buy insurance, think about that as paying premiums for the right to own insurance in the form of a lower expected return. So, when you buy insurance, right, you're cash flow negative until you need it, right? So, if we come into a period where equities are doing poorly, and it's either deflationary or inflationary, holding a small allocation in those buckets and cashing it in when you need it most, again, for liquidity needs, benefit payments, hopefully, rebalancing, but again, to mitigate or hopefully, remove the possibility of having to sell sort of these growth engine assets at the wrong time. Any questions or comments around that? Okay. So, I want to spend a couple of quick minutes on this idea of inflation. Again, I think it's, it's, it's not as well-understood amongst investors than the deflationary environment. So, if you look at Page 18, what we've done here is, over the past 100 or so years, and let me make a quick comment, we look on that x-axis for the date, the last date there is 2018, but given the, the frequency of every four years, the last data point is actually at the end of 2020. That's just why we don't see that, because it doesn't fall into the frequency, and if we showed every year, it'd be unreadable. So, with that said, what we're showing here is how equities have done amid these different environments. So, in blue is when inflation is above 2% and rising, orange, above 2 but falling, gray, below 2, rising, and then yellow, below 2 and falling. So, if you look all the way to the right there, the poorest environments for equities, blue and yellow, when inflation has been above 2 and rising, or below 2 and falling. Think about that as moving away from sort of a price stability or a stable price environment, right? So, that 2% is sort of the Fed's goal. So, if we're moving further above 2%, equities have not historically done well, or if we're below 2% and moving further away from it, equities have not done well. The best periods are those orange and gray bars with regardless of whether we're above or below. or below it, we're moving back closer to that two percent, that sort of, you know, stable inflationary type of environment. So that's when equities tend to do well. So circling back to my previous point in blue and yellow, blue is an inflationary environment and yellow is a deflationary environment. And what kind of insurance could potentially protect the portfolio around that? So just on page nineteen, before we talk about the type of assets that could be helpful, I wanted to dig deeper into that inflationary environment, right? The mid-sixties, seventies-type period. So this is a similar, the same exercise as the previous page, but we're only showing two of those lines here because inflation was above two percent for that entire period. The only time equities actually gained in that period was in orange. So inflation was above two percent and falling, so moving back to two percent. When it was above two and rising, equities did quite, quite poorly over that whole fifteen-year period. They ended up underwater, and at some point during their year, an investor would have lost fifty percent of their money. So again, just to really illustrate the importance in thinking about holding, you know, quote-unquote "insurance-type" assets. Now, equities are the, and equities and equity-like assets should be the predominant allocation within the portfolio, but these things are cyclical, and we need to think about them from, again, sort of this insurance-type of perspective. What can help mitigate any downside risk if we enter an environment, either recessionary or, you know, a lot of people are talking about inflation potentially picking up in the coming years? So what kind of assets should we be looking at and in what relative allocations within the portfolio? And those will be topics for discussion at future meetings. Questions around that before we continue? So on page twenty, we will talk about, again, digging deeper, a little bit more deeply into how you can quote-unquote "hedge" or buy inflation insurance. And again, it's not well-understood, I think, by most investors. So what we're showing here, and you can see on this X-axis, we work from left to right at the bottom, a number of asset classes. The first four are traditional assets, equities, U.S., international, fixed income, and cash. And the numbers of the bars there are showing what's called, you know, inflation beta or inflation sensitivity. So in a period of high inflation, if you have a number higher than one, history would suggest a return multiple higher than one, right, or in excess of one. And if it's below one and positive, it means these assets tend to do well when inflation is rising, but doesn't keep pace with inflation. So if you think about it from a traditional perspective, probably no surprise that fixed income really doesn't do all that good. The third bar over from the left is when inflation ticks up, rates usually go up, bond prices go down. Cash is a little bit of a better story because there's no interest rate risk holding such short-term cash. So the Fed, at least historically, raises rates amid an inflationary period, and cash can provide at least some protection around that. But if you work away from left to right, starting with cash, you see commodities, real estate, treasury-inflation-protected securities, natural resource equities, and REITs, these would be considered inflation-sensitive-type assets. But notice the wide dispersion around their sensitivity to inflation. Commodities, very, very high. Natural resource equity is really the second here, but real estate, TIPS, REITs, they are sensitive to inflation, but not nearly as much as commodities and natural resource equities. So when we think about inflationary insurance, we think a lot similarly to the total portfolio. We want to diversify total portfolio because there's no one simple solution. And similarly with inflation, given there's no one straightforward solution, we think a diversified approach with some of these assets makes a lot of sense for investors to consider when that type of environment is of concern. You look on page twenty-one, excuse me. A secondary benefit to holding these assets is diversification, right? So if we want to add new asset classes, we want to make sure they're not moving in lockstep with what we already hold. So across all these inflationary-sensitive assets, you can see the blue numbers there, that's the correlation with U.S. equities, red with fixed income. Those numbers can range from one to negative one. The lower they are means the more diversification that they are providing. You'll notice for commodities, TIPS, and real estate, very good diversification relative to equities and relative to fixed income. For natural resource equities and REITs, again, these are stocks of companies that own and operate those types of assets, so they trade as equities, so they tend to have the volatility of equities, so don't provide as much diversification as those other asset classes. But then, as you would expect, very low correlations almost across the board outside of TIPS, which are fixed income securities, relative to fixed income for those inflation assets, either just above zero or below zero negative. So there is this secondary benefit of not just providing you an inflation insurance, but diversification across just equities and fixed income themselves. So to wrap up this discussion on page twenty-two, one of the things that we want to be cognizant of is certainly how these fit in the total portfolio, but, you know, how would things look like in isolation? So there's a lot of data points on this page. We're just showing the risk and return characteristics over the past forty-plus-odd years for the exact asset classes we showed on a couple of the previous pages. So I want to point your attention to the right here. You can see REITs up there in pink, natural resources equities in lighter blue, and commodities in purple in that grouping to the right. So we have a number of those assets that have provide similar returns to equities, namely REITs, you know, natural resource equities, commodities have been below that, but they've had the volatility or risk of equities. And then if you work your way over to the left, namely the blue diamond for real estate and the orange diamond for TIPS, these are inflationary-sensitive assets that have provided returns less than equities, but the volatility of TIPS. So again, there's no real one perfect solution. So what I boxed up here again is this basket, right? A diversified sort of inflationary insurance-type portfolio approach that's just an equal-weighted average of all those five asset classes. And you can see a return closer to equities than fixed income, but with volatility closer to fixed income. So again, I wanted to spend a few minutes around this inflationary insurance-type of idea because as we move forward here and talk about it at a more granular level on the asset classes, it's important to keep in mind, you know, what are we trying to accomplish, not just at the total portfolio level, but with each of these individual asset classes? You know, what are the roles that they were playing? What do we expect of them in different environments? And are they going to help us as we build this mousetrap? So with that said, let me pause again for any questions before continuing. Okay. All right. So the rest of this discussion, I think, will be more straightforward than some of those other dynamics. So if you look on page twenty-three, we talked about role in the portfolio, so these are key considerations around alternatives. We're going to talk here in a second about liquidity, fees, and then the importance of manager selection within those asset classes. So if you move to page twenty-four, start with liquidity, and this is a real dynamic depending on the investment vehicle you use. So in blue here, we're showing private vehicles or unlisted funds. In gray to the right, public vehicles, listed funds. We're just going to focus on the blue here since we're talking about alternatives. So there are two different types of vehicles, one called an open-end fund, so this operates in perpetuity. The liquidity is not as good as, say, a public vehicle, but it is liquid. It could have monthly, quarterly, or maybe semi-annual liquidity. About twelve percent of the assets in the fund right now are in those types of vehicles between the hedge funds, the private, and the private REITs. So that's going to come down, namely when we get those funds back in April from the private REIT managers, and then in early July from one of the hedge funds. But from the closed-end fund perspective, this is a very different dynamic. So right now, about nine percent of the fund is invested in private equity, private credit, private real estate, and private infrastructure, and that is likely to grow over time, regardless of what we do, and I'm going to explain that in a second. But the important thing around the closed-end fund is you, as the investor, do not control the size and the timing of those cash flows like you do with an open-ended fund. You make a commitment, a dollar amount commitment to the manager, and they call that money over time, invest it, and then they return it to you as they see fit. So thinking about those dynamics, if you look at page twenty-five specifically, that bottom row, which illustrates exactly the timeline I just touched on briefly, what these managers will do, again, these are closed-end funds, is they will fundraise. So maybe a firm raises a private equity fund every couple of years. They'll go to their existing investor base that was a part of previous funds and maybe new investors and try to raise commitments in some aggregate amount, maybe a billion-dollar fund, two-billion-dollar fund. So they'll do that for a period of a year. Then you can see the next part of that puzzle there, an investment period. Once they've called, you know, all or most of the capital, they'll begin to invest it. So invest in companies, try to improve them from an operational or business-type perspective from a four-to-five-year period, and then you move into what's called the harvest period, just a fancy way of saying, trying to realize the gains, or hopefully the gains, from buying those assets and then returning the money to the underlying investors. And so money tends to be called from the investors very early on in those first four or five years and doesn't get returned in earnest until, say, years seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. But then this last piece of the puzzle here, extension, one to two years. So these funds typically have a term of about eleven to twelve years per the subscription agreement. But then the managers, at their discretion, can extend the life of the fund, maybe one, two, or three years. So all told, you can have a closed-end fund commitment or investment that's around for twelve to fifteen years. And if you think about a lot of the commitments that have been made, it's my understanding that many of them have been made in sort of 2017, 2018. Those are funds that are going to be around until 2030, so for quite a while. And just to get back to my point that they're going to grow, it's because those commitments have been so early, not a ton of the money has been called yet. So as that's continued to be called, it's going to outweigh the money that's returned to you. So it's going to grow over time. Today, it's nine percent of the fund. At the end of the year, it might be closer to ten, might go up to eleven and twelve in the coming years. So that is a key consideration as we shift gears in just a couple of minutes and talk about asset allocation. How do we manage that, right? How do we think about that moving forward? Do we still want it to be a part of the puzzle? And if not, we have to manage the migration from it because it's going to take time to do that.
So is your recommendation at Marquette not to use closed-end funds?
No, it's not. And I'm sorry, I should have chosen my words a little bit more carefully, I think. It's not our recommendation. My goal here is just to make sure that the board completely understands the dynamics around this, the risks around liquidity, because it can be done thoughtfully and done well. And hopefully, I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think for those of you on the OPEB board have seen that in the past, that it's been done successfully and thoughtfully and been very helpful. And I think it could be here as well, but it's going to take time because the underlying managers, we can't do anything about it right now. They're kind of in place, we have to wait for it to wind up, but over time, to the extent the board would like to continue to make allocations to that area, which would likely be our recommendation, would just depend on the sizing. We'd make newer commitments to other funds, not necessarily the ones that are being used now, managers that we think are sort of the best-in-breed in the private markets.
I think for us, the moral of the story is now that we know better, we shouldn't go there.
And I guess that's helpful information because I think before we enter into a fund, these are kind of the, this is the information we need to know in terms of just kind of the logistics rather than just, you know, on the rebalancing page for me that says, you know, take, you know, this asset and, you know, subtract from here and add to here, and we're kind of true credit and debiting. But these, this level of logistics, I don't think we've seen before, so I think it's helpful to look at that kind of logistics as part of the material that we get.
Well, and you'll also remember that when we were getting our quarterly reports from our previous advisor, there was a big chunk which couldn't be reported on because they had no way to determine evaluation. It took forever. So this isn't like opening the paper and seeing what the price of X, Y, Z is. We didn't know. And I think that alone would carry the day that, let's not do this anymore. And to the extent that we're doing it now, I think our problem is, do we put in for liquidation or let these things age out simply because we've already boarded that ship and it has sailed?
Or we can just remain cognizant that we have this uncalled money that is sitting there that we really haven't seen that level of detail on. So on our balance sheets and rebalancing, we just see, okay, we're going to typically, they would tell us, we're going to take one percent, whatever, I'm making up the number, we're going to take one percent, rebalance it over here, terminate this one. And then out of that one percent might be, you know, I'm making up the number, obviously a million dollars, but only two-hundred thousand is going to be called. So now we have the opportunity cost of eight-hundred thousand sitting there for two or three years. So as long as we're not overweight in opportunity cost.
So to be clear, the funds that are in there now, they are set. There's largely nothing that we can do about it, okay? So when we talk about rebalancing, it's not the private market funds. They're going to have to continue to play out over time. But to your point, Sergeant, moving forward, if you make a commitment of a million dollars, and there are a lot of unfunded commitments in the current ones, it doesn't just sit in cash, the manager doesn't call the money immediately, they give you a notice of about ten days, and then you figure out where the money is coming from. Largely, it's from existing cash because any other sort of rebalancing or execution would require board approval. So that's why we carry typically two-ish, two-and-a-half million dollars in cash just to mitigate that risk of not having it be there when the money is called.
So are you saying that money in this example has not already migrated over and is looking for application, or it's on our books but is obligated to migrate?
The latter. So you have, you've made, then I apologize, I don't have the data in front of me, but commitments to probably about twelve dozen closed-end funds, I think. I think the current allocation, again, is about nine percent of the total fund, which works out to about eight-ish, seven or eight million dollars. But from an unfunded commitment perspective, it's higher than what those managers have already called because, again, you didn't commit until two or three years ago, so they just started calling that money.
So could that be one of the things we look at as next steps? So that what you're describing, the list of the twelve, that the board would have that information as well?
That will be a part of our normal quarterly performance report, but I'm happy to provide it at the next meeting if you'd like, Dr. Bridgen.
One more question, then. If it's on our books is obligated, but it hasn't been called yet, is that a means by which we can withdraw from the call?
No.
Okay.
So how, if you, it's a legal binding agreement. If you were to not make a capital call, then it's likely you'd forfeit your interest in the partnership, so including the hundreds and thousands of dollars you've already had called.
And they're counting on that being available someday?
Yes.
Okay.
So should we have in our IPS, the ceiling of which we, I don't think we do.
I, I think you do.
It's been a couple of years, and I know we're going to revisit it down the road with you guys, but I just want to, we've never had this in-depth conversation about uncalled.
Right. And those are, and we're going to get into this in just a few short slides, that really the tools of resources, and you'll see this in the performance report moving forward, where we'll list all the closed-end funds, their current values, the, what they've called, what the commitments are, and therefore, the difference of the two is what's left unfunded. And then we'll show you the performance on the individual funds in aggregate, and you can compare that to public markets and say, well, these are illiquid private market funds. Would we have been better off just leaving it in the public market? So that'll be a part of our regularly quarterly performance report, but if you would like us to put together something just on a quick spreadsheet for more granularity, happy to do that and pass it out prior to the next meeting or bring it to the next meeting, whatever the board sees fit.
Yeah, I just think it's helpful information if we have it for the next meeting, whichever format it flows. I think it's helpful.
But, but could there not be a trap in that? So if the investment period can be four to five years, theoretically, holding it up against the public market doesn't work because the public market is doing its thing right now where the other thing may not be fully committed.
Correct. So you largely do not want to compare these types of investments to the public market until they're eight, nine years, eight, nine, ten years old? until they're eight, nine year, eight, nine, 10 years old to give you a good sense of that, you know, not only to Mr. Walters.
By which point it's too late.
Well, I mean, now it's largely for the current allocations, you know?
Okay.
We'll, we'll keep monitoring them and you'll be able to see that information about how they've been doing relative to public markets. So let's skip to page 26 and we'll talk briefly about fees and manager selection before beginning to wrap up. So I think we've discussed this regularly in the past as far as private markets. Typically management fees, 2% for direct funds, those are most of the funds in the, in the plan right now, direct meaning that these companies are, or these firms are investing directly in portfolio companies and deals. About half a percent to a percent for fund of funds, you do have a couple of those, meaning that you allocate to investment manager, they commit the money to direct funds underneath that. So you do have both levels of fees for the fund of funds and the underlying. And then there are the incentive fees. So typically, again, 20% of profits are shared above what's called a hurdle or a target rate of return, typically 8% for a direct fund, similar for a fund of funds. But the incentive fee for the fund of funds is much smaller for that. But again, the underlying fees are within the underlying funds that that fund of, fund of funds manager is committing, committing to, excuse me. So when you think about, again, you know, why would you do this to some comments earlier, it really goes back to the role in the portfolio, right? We would expect or hope for, once you make this decision, a return premium relative to public markets over the long term to compensate you for the illiquidity of that sort of investment. And then secondarily related to that, if it doesn't fall in the growth engine bucket and falls into the insurance bucket, then that diversification. So those are the two main reasons, just to sort of tie everything together, that investors consider these. And finally, for manager selection, the big takeaway here, this is a pretty neat chart put together by JP Morgan, where it's showing all the managers that fall under these respective asset class universe on the X or horizontal axis there. And you can see for those first three rows, the orange line is the median return, the, the dispersion isn't all that great, meaning that choosing to allocate those asset classes are really going to be the biggest driver of your outcome. Whereas the individual manager returns, how they deviate from one another, more of a marginal impact. Where it's sort of flipped on its head is if you look, everything right to core real estate there, non-core real estate, private equity, venture hedge funds, look at those ranges, right? The manager dispersion is incredibly wide, many, many multiples of what the traditional asset classes are. So again, the key takeaway here is if you choose to maintain those sorts of allocations, that it's very important to have access, be able to commit capital to the, really the, the best performing managers, because the best performing managers tend to be persistent. So in the public markets, there's some cyclicality around how managers do because they can be in and out of favor depending on what's broadly going on in markets. But on the private side, it's generally the same guys who have access to the same deal, the same deals coming their way, the same deals, company deals that they're reviewing and sort of have, you know, first dibs at those best deals. So manager performance tends to persist, so it's very important to have access and be able to select those top performing managers, as you can see, based on this dispersion in those asset classes.
What would be an example of non-core real estate?
So there's really three major components to real estate to be core. So, you know, well-established, high-leased properties like in the office space, apartment space, industrial space, retail space. When you look at non-core, there's two differences. Number one, it could be the type of property, so more like hotels, senior assisted living, medical offices, things of that nature, but then also the life cycle of the property itself. So buying just a piece of land that doesn't have a building on it or buying a building that's just been built and has no occupancy. So those are the two risk components which, which make that a more aggressive than just your regular core real estate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll wrap, or we'll, we'll spend a couple of quick minutes on the next slide talking about asset allocation tools and resources and then wrap up with next steps. So on page 29 again, since we're on a, you know, sort of total portfolio, high level here, and we're going to look at doing an asset allocation study in the next couple of months, I just wanted to give you some quick context on some of the charts, graphs and, and data that we'll be providing to hopefully help in the decision-making process. So the rest of these charts in this deck are, are more illustrative. So one of the things we'll do, based on the conversations and discussions particularly related to alternatives, is, you know, put together a few portfolio options, you know, based on relative equities, fixed incomes, alternatives, to the extent the board would like to continue, but then show you the base case outlook there at the bottom below over the next 10 years. What's a base case return? What's a base case risk or volatility? But related to that, we're also highly concerned about the range of outcomes, right? Because I can tell you almost without, you know, with complete certainty that the base case is not going to come, come to fruition to the base, basis point over the next 10 years. So we look at that range of outcomes, where are the risks? So on page 30, it's a similar type of exercise, but looking at the distribution of returns, not just the base case. So when anything below 50% there is more of a worst case type scenario, above 50, best case type scenario. But again, we're keenly focused on that downside because that's where risk tolerance, risk constraints, risk management tend to really come out in these discussions, you know? Can we live with this in 10 years if the worst case scenario is looking like we're going to be X, Y, Z lower than the assumed rate of return? Because that obviously has big implications from an asset perspective, a funded ratio perspective, and then a budgetary perspective, to the extent that those returns come in south of the assumed rate of return. Related to that, on page 31, we will work with our counterparts at Bolton to gather projected cash flows and liabilities. So we can show you the range of outcomes as it relates to the funded ratio too. So not just looking at returns, but, you know, make it more unique and specific to this fund and show you again, the range of outcomes between in a, a very poor scenario, a really good scenario, and that base case. Again, we find the former being very highly conducive to those discussions around risk tolerance and risk management from a strategic sort of policy perspective. And then finally, on page 32, a lot of those previous charts and datas and graphs are around 10 years. But historically, when we have poor markets, they tend to be, happen in bursts, sort of one, two, three years and then things recover. So we have the ability to look at how these various portfolios would have done in the financial crisis in Black Monday of 1987, or in interest rate increases like we saw in 1981 and 1994, or even simulate it going forward, you know, what would things look like if rates moved up by 1% a year? What would things look like if equities did poorly for the next three years? So again, just an additional risk management tool to help the board make a decision as it relates to the investment policy statement, but specifically asset allocation. Questions around any of that? I will wrap up on the next two pages before we hit next steps.
Back on
Yes, sir.
Page 30.
Yes, sir.
What is our target return for what we're shooting for to meet all of our future obligations?
Seven and a quarter.
Seven and a quarter.
Yeah. And this is illustrative too, so not specific to this fund, but just to answer your question, seven and a quarter.
Am I misreading the bottom chart on page 29 that we're nowhere near a target?
This is, I'm sorry, this is illustrative. This isn't the fund. This isn't the sheriff's fund itself. This was just to give you a sense of when we get into the June timeframe, you know, what are the sort of exhibits and, and data and analysis that we'll be providing. But since we don't, we haven't fully had the discussions around asset allocation and alternatives, we didn't prepare it. So I just sourced this from a previous client presentation to show you the type of analysis, but this is not for the specific fund.
Current is not applicable to us.
Yes, sir.
Which is a sample.
Just a sample, yes. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Much better words though.
Start my heart again.
And I'm going, darn, it looks like the same numbers from the prior presentation. Now I know why.
Oh, well, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Our business is all about scale. So I, I think these next two pages will be instructive on 33 and 34, getting back to some of those conversations around closed end funds and how do we manage them? So internally, we have, as you look at page 33, that header there, what's called a private market commitment model. So what we have the ability to do is take your unique characteristics, the market value return, cash flows and the previous commitments you have made, and then look at that historically, you can see this graph here on the left, and then projected in gray going forward specifically around the cash flows coming in and out of that specific part of the portfolio. So this is instructive here, if you think in 2011, this is sort of the beginning of this respective program. So, you know, those lighter blue bars are very negative because money is coming out of the fund, moving into the managers. And then you can see later on, it sort of shifts, right? More money coming back in those top purple bars as money is being harvested in return. But the key dynamic, if you look on page 34, again, to the extent that we'd like to continue with an allocation of these asset classes, it's something that we'll have to run every year to say, not just what the ultimate target is, but how do we get there? So if you look on this, this blue line here on page 34, it's just an illustration of a, again, a sample of the, a client that made a, a private equity allocation. It increased early on, as you would expect, as the managers called money, and then it tailed off in the back half of the exhibit because no new commitments were made. Whereas the green one was essentially saying, what would play out or how are you going to get to your target allocation? So again, to the extent that they continue to be included, this is something we want every year to determine what's called the pacing, right? So how many dollars each year should be committed to a certain asset class? And then from there, the implementation. So making up a number, $3 million, do we want to commit that all to one fund or do we want to split it across two or three? So this is something internal that we're constantly doing, but I think it's, it's important for the board to be cognizant of, that if we do continue moving in that direction, we're not just bringing these numbers, you know, you've historically made million and a half million, $2 million commitments. It should be X, Y, Z per year to get you where you want to be and then split it across, you know, X, Y, Z respective managers. So again, just a sample of, of the type of tools and resources that we'll provide. So with that, we'll wrap up behind exhibit five and then happy to answer any comments or questions and particularly around the, the timeline moving forward here under next So in the April meeting, as I mentioned, the plan is to dig a little bit deeper in the current asset classes, you know, namely alternatives, you know, what you're using now, are we still comfortable with that? Talk about the relative merits and any possible new ones moving forward. If that leaks into the June meeting, we'll continue that discussion. We'll also have the performance report to, to walk through at, at that time. If we have everything wrapped up, we can move into sort of the asset allocation study, you know, showing you the data analysis that I illustrated a few minutes ago. And then subsequent to that, once we have our, our, our long-term roadmap from an asset allocation perspective, we'll look at updating the investment policy statement, just the target allocations and just ensuring everything's in line with best practices. And then to circle back to the earlier comments related to Wells Fargo, shift gears into that custody evaluation. Yes, sir.
Take, take that last topic off the table.
Yes, sir.
Go back one notch about growth allocation and then the next one was the investment policy. Did I hear those in the right order?
The, the growth allocation?
Or maybe asset allocation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the, the asset allocation, yes. So that would be first, right? Because we need to know what that is before we can incorporate it into the investment policy.
Why don't we let the investment policy drive what it should be?
I'm afraid the current investment policy drive what it should be?
No, I think the current investment policy is kofefi.
So are you, I, I'm sorry, I don't know that I'm completely following.
Well, what, what I'm coming at is, I think we ought to have the structure of the document in place and allocate to that rather than allocate to the old document and then rewrite the new one.
Oh, we won't be allocating to the old. So like we talked about today, this has largely been around an implementation based on the exists, on the existing document. So when we look at asset allocation, we'll look to, you know, immediately, subsequent to that, update the policy statement. So it's, it's my hope, say, we were able to do the June asset allocation study, that we would have a draft for you all to review at the next meeting. I wouldn't expect you to approve it based on just looking at it once, but hopefully we can use that time for feedback and discussion and then maybe at the next meeting. And then once that's in place, that incorporates the asset allocation targets as well as any changes as it relates to best practices. And then we circle back to implementation once more.
And so maybe it's the word study, what you're thinking, because I think what you're talking about is June meeting is really the asset allocation study. That's kind of the results of everything.
Correct.
And so we want to use that information to then start to review the investment policy statement.
Right.
So it's not rebalancing and re-
Not taking any action based on the old policy statement.
Correct.
It's just information.
Nothing's going to be done until we have our new statement, but to get there, we have to do the asset allocation
Right.
... study and then determine what the IS, IPS looks like from there, and then we'll do rebalancing from there.
But don't we have the data of how we're doing now incorporated in this document?
The data of how you're doing now?
Yeah, how we're, how we're spread out, how we're allocated.
Sure, it's on page way back, I want to say 11 or, 11 or 12 perhaps?
Mm-hmm. Page 11.
Thank you, Dr. Bridget.
On the bottom.
Right. So the, the, so this page is showing the respective allocations across the various asset classes and the managers. But then if you look below in that bottom left-hand box, you can see the respective asset classes. And then in blue, those are the targets based upon the current policy. So we're making any decision as it relates to the current policy because that's, you know, our roadmap as things stand here today, which will hopefully, or which, you know, my intention, hopefully to update and change over the next several months. And then we'll be working along the confines of whatever the board approves as it relates to that.
I'm still, I guess I'm still not grasping the notion that as we, as we work toward the target here in the bottom, maybe that's not the target we want.
Right. And that's what the asset allocation study is, is intended to answer.
But by that time, haven't we already made some of these shifts?
Yes, all the shifts have, all of these shifts were, have already been made, but within the confines of the current policy.
And so there's a freeze, except for what we talked about earlier. There's a freeze then on doing anything pending a new investment policy document?
Not a freeze in the sense that there, you know, when I come back in April, if there's other rebalancing to consider, that can be under consideration as long as it's within the confines of the current statement.
Well, from what I saw of the current statement, I don't think that that reflects where I personally would want us to go.
Right. And that, that's why the, the asset allocation study, I think, along with the eventual update of the document, can be tailored to where the board in aggregate wants to go.
Okay.
Right? I'm, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm not answering your question, but-
I feel like I'm not phrasing it properly, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
Could we go back to your efficient frontier page, please?
Yes, sir. On page
16.
16.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So as we follow the arc out to the right, theoretically, we would reap a greater reward, but we're taking a greater risk to get there.
Yes, sir.
Conversely, if we stay at the lower left hand of the arc, it's just the opposite.
Yes.
Somewhere on that arc is an ideal spot where we would probably expect, but not necessarily get, but expect the best return for the least risk. Not the best return period and not the least risk period, but where would you guesstimate that percentage? the least risk period, but where would you guesstimate that percentage stocks/bonds should be at the ideal point?
Solely, solely thinking from a stocks and bonds perspective?
Solely from those two.
So that depends, right? We have to take into consideration the assumed rate of return, right? Which is right now, 7 and 1/4%. So we would argue that equities are a little overvalued relative to history, and if we, when we do these studies, it's more on a 10-year-type basis. So it could be as high, particularly given interest rates are so low, so fixed income is providing such subdued returns that, you know, the appropriate mix based upon your target could be as high as like 85, 15, 90, 90, 10. But if we're not concerned about that assumed rate of return, and I'm not saying we're not, but, you know, with the mix with the highest risk-adjusted return would be much more heavily weighted towards bonds than equities, but your return outlook would be very, very low.
Okay.
Right, so I think it's a function of the investment objective, which is very clearly 7 and 1/4, right? So unless the board is comfortable with having an allocation that is lower than that, that would be less equities, more fixed income, and a higher risk-adjusted return. But if you're not hitting that actuarial assumed rate of return, then technically, you're at an actuarial loss, right? You're not making the money they expect you to make, therefore, your unfunded liability goes up, your mortgage payment goes up, and it hits your budget.
Well, I don't know that you advise these folks, but if we look on page 14, Talbot County has a 65, 35 percentage. They're doing nothing over there in alternatives, and I wonder how they're doing with that percentage.
I don't have that in front of me. I'd be happy to try to dig it up. They are not a client of ours. But typically, when you look up and down this page, Mr. Walters, where you do not see, so say the, look at Talbets, see if there's any other good, make Calvert. They tend to be, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the smaller counties that can't necessarily access some of the other investments that we talked about today. So, and these things are cyclical, right? Over the past 10 years, 65, 35, simple, straightforward, has done the best by far. That's largely been driven by a very strong environment for equities and interest rates that have continued to come down. So if we look forward over the next 10 years, and again, remembering that things are very cyclical, can we expect, you know, 12% compounded for equities over the next 10 years? I'd argue no. Can we expect 5% from fixed income that we've seen over the past 10 years?
Well, I think since we're an open-ended timeline here,
Yeah.
It would be interesting to know 65, 35, back 20 years or 25 years, how it has done. Because you're going to have those 00, 01, 02 pullbacks, pretty much going to slam everybody.
Sure.
And then you're going to have the V shape, what was 08, fairly short, and then March of last year, fairly short. It all smoothes out, one way or the other. But I'm just kind of curious how they're doing without all the bells and whistles tacked on to what appears to be their allocation of 65, 35.
Yeah, admittedly, I don't know it, because we don't work with them. I, again, I would suspect it's better than a lot of these other funds, because a more simple approach has been very helpful, particularly given rates have come down so much, so fixed income has done so well. But we think about these things retroactively, but also prospectively, right? The 10-year at 1 and 1/2% today, over the next 10, 15, 20 years, I mean, over the next 10 years, 1 and 1/2%, 10-rig's going to give you 1 and 1/2%, right? So if rates rise over that time, even if, say, 4 and 1/2% over the next 20 years, you're looking at 3%, right? It's just a simple average. But your points well taken, and to the extent the board would like to look at a more simplified portfolio, happy to provide the information around that, but also, you know, make you cognizant of the relative merits specifically around fixed income and the headwind that is going to provide, given low rates. So it's going to be hard to hit 7 and 1/4, and that obviously has budgetary implications.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I know we were on next steps, so I think we were final. Anything else on next steps? That was the last one, yeah? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, your questions.
And for old business, we have 4A is fiduciary insurance, and Catherine Pratt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bridget. And this was in response, Mr. Walters had a question about our fiduciary insurance renewal that was on the planned administrator report last meeting. And thank you to Karen. She did a little digging to find out the history of our fiduciary insurance. And we are with the broker, our CMD, Riggs, Councilman, Michaels &amp; Don since 2009, with a policy effective date of February 16th, '09. The insurance policy has remained with Chubb since that time, and the premium increased in 2018, because we changed the limits of the coverage from a million to three. And that resulted in an annual premium of the 17, 909, which was just paid.
Was that jump by $2 million? Was that dictated by anything, or recommended based on our exposure, or what?
It was recommended by the plan attorney, Mary Claire Teshire.
Right. And although we are with Chubb, have we been able to access the landscape to see if we can get similar coverage for a lower premium?
So we haven't, and I appreciate your question, because we also hold fiduciary insurance with the other county trusts, and we tend to look at them in isolated buckets. And just recently, Dr. Bridget and Jeanette and I are looking at a schedule for RFPs, and one of the proposals is to look at all the fiduciary insurance coverages together and consider going out for bid. Currently, the SORT plan is under the threshold for the bidding process, but if we were to combine all the coverages, we would exceed the threshold.
Kind of as a side question, would that wrap anything that is coverage for the library board?
Not typically, yeah.
Could it?
We can check.
Yeah.
To see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
They might be able to piggyback on our contract.
Right. Uh-huh. Great. Anything else on this item for fiduciary insurance?
Good information.
Okay, great. And we'll keep you posted. So as we're doing our schedule, we'll circle back and let you know what the outcome is. And 4B is Marquette Associates. Catherine?
Yes, thank you. This is another follow-up item. We seem to focus so much on fees this year, and one of the questions came up about the Marquette contract and how Marquette is paid. And attached is the fees that have been agreed to with the Marquette contract that was approved in November.
And then this is the amount for all the trust combined?
Yes, this is all the trust combined. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jeanette.
So is that, is that bill proportionally laid off on each of the trusts?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on the assets.
Okay. So where do we rank asset-wise compared to our two trust colleagues? Are we 80% of that?
In memory, I think OPEB is the-
OPEB is-
OPEB's about 110.
110, and we are?
About 123.
Oh, 123.
Not too far off, right.
And then Lo Sap is about 7.
So the SORT plan is about 123 million, OPEB is about 110 million, and SORT and Lo Sap is 6 million.
Okay, so we share in that rough ratio, okay?
Yes.
Is that a fixed number, or is that a, is it a percentage that's applied, or how, where do we come up with that number?
A fixed number, meaning, so per the contract, it's a set dollar amount. So as the relative allocations and percentages change, then there could be marginal changes in how the funds, you know, the proportional, you know-
Charge.
Billing of the fund.
So if we have a lot of growth here and the other two don't, we're going to share a bigger percent of the bill?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But does the bill change because it's based on asset growth?
It's a fixed, it's a fixed fee, sir.
Okay.
Yes, yes, not asset-based.
All right. So that first number, 235, we're good for that, our share of that for four years?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Again, it could change marginally based on-
Yeah.
Yes, but that is, that's a fixed fee.
We're just dividing the pie differently. The pie hasn't changed.
You got it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you for the information. Any other questions on this one? Okay, great. Thank you. Committee reports, administrators' report. Karen?
Okay, we have one bill that was paid, and that was from our plan attorney, Whiteford, Taylor &amp; Preston. The amount of the invoice was for $1,200, and that was regarding, the plan attorney responded to a former participant's ex-spouse's attorney regarding which language to include in the qualified domestic relations order, which was presented to the plan coordinator. And then the plan attorney reviewed some Morgan Stanley documents and the contract, and there was a conference call with the SORT plan administrator. That's it.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the administrators' report. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. And because we opened last week to the public with social distancing guidelines, public comments is back on our list. Is there any public comments for today? Hearing none, we'll move on to, number seven is closed session, so I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal advice. And then we will adjourn our open session, close the meeting to the public, so that you have an opportunity to consult counsel.
I'll move to exit open session and go into closed session
For legal-
For the purpose of discussing legal advice.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we go into, adjourn the public meeting, please? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the public meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.